Good evening and welcome to our, I'm sorry, I'm looking at four different pieces of paper here. Welcome to our October 21st board work session, no, this is the board meeting. Recognition meeting as well. Would like to call our meeting to order and begin by asking to, a motion to approve, to adopt our proposed agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by, I believe that was Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the proposed agenda? And it is unanimous, six oh. At this time, I, it's time to adjourn to executive session where we will discuss personnel, student discipline, land and legal matters. No votes will be taken except for the approval of our executive session minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning to executive session? It is unanimous, we are adjourned to executive session.
Thank you.
This is actually is one of our favorite nights of the year and it's just a chance to recognize your awesome kids, your awesome students. That's really what the focus is tonight. But it is actually also an official meeting of the Board of Education. So we came into session at 5:30, came into our meeting at 5:30, then adjourned to executive session for the last hour or so. And so we're actually about to come back into session now. But like I said, I just want to kind of kick things off, tell you what to expect. We've got a great course over here. PB Rich is joining us, right? Tonight. And so we've got these guys, we're going to recognize students. We've just got all kinds of things planned out tonight. But I will tell you, we promise we're going to get you out by 7:30. Looking around the room at the worried faces. But we know, especially with elementary students, we need to get you home. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to make this night go smooth and efficient. Get you out by 7:30. We're going to take a recess at that point. You're welcome to stay and finish watching the board meeting. I know some of you are very excited about that. But during the recess, if you want to go ahead and leave, that'd be a great time to do that. So we've got, like I said, some exciting things to do. But really, in order for this whole thing to work, we got to come back into session. And the only way we can do that is to have someone gavel us. And so I have asked Dr. Paul Chafee to come up and him to find us somebody who might serve as an honorary board chair to get us back on track and back in session. So Dr. Chafee.
On works. Thank you, Mr. Barnett. I am super excited this evening. It was, one of my favorite jobs is the honorary gaveller. And Dawson Toadvine has joined us this evening. He's represented by his family out here. His sister Tatum loves riding horses. Dawson loves playing baseball. He's going to do an amazing job of gavelling us in tonight. He attends Roberts Elementary. And Paul Wilder, principal, is here as well in support. So Dawson Toadvine, he is here.
So when do I say?
Right now.
So what?
I call this meeting to order and then hit it.
I thought this more to eat it.
Meeting to order.
Meeting to order.
All right, now.
I believe we have a video we're going to play and then we'll get started back with the meeting.
Sorry. Thank you all. And thank you Dawson for doing such a great, great job. I lost him, but he's here, I know. Thank you for doing such a great job. At this time, I would like to ask Kendrick Scott if you would come and lead us in our invocation. And then after that, I will get Mr. Musgrove to come and introduce our JROTC for the pledge.
Good evening. If you all will please stand. All right. How everybody doing this evening? Y'all doing good? All right. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you, Lord God, for allowing us to come out to this board meeting tonight. We pray now, God, that you allow your wisdom and your power and your strength and your might to be upon every person in this building on tonight. God, we ask, Father, that you will allow wisdom to go throughout this place. Father, we ask that you will cover. We ask that you will strengthen, lead in God. Father, I declare and decree right now, in the mighty name of Jesus, that no weapon formed against this meeting shall be able to prosper. And that every tongue that rises up against it in the day of judgment, it shall be condemned. And so, God, I pray right now, in the name of Jesus, that your hand will be upon every single person that is under the sound of my voice. Touch them and lead them and guide them and protect their babies, Lord God. Go upon every single campus in this county, Lord God, from the, from the north to the south and to the east and the west, Lord God, leading and guiding, Lord God, and strengthening and encouraging. And Father, we thank you, Lord, for every single staff member that is represented in this district. We thank you, Lord God, for every student, every, every single person, Lord God, that makes up the Paulding County School District. And so, God, we thank you. And we ask that your blood will continue to cover. We ask that your blood will continue to strengthen. We ask, Lord God, as we move and walk in purpose, Lord God, that you will be glorified in every area of our life. And so, God, we thank you. And God, we ask that your supernatural power will reign on this meeting tonight. And, Lord God, you will be glorified from the crown, from our heads to the very souls of our feet. And so, Father, we thank you on tonight. And we ask that your blessings will be upon the Paulding County School District. And, Lord God, we call this prayer to be sown and done. Let every heart that agree and believe say amen in Jesus' name.
Nice work. Turn it on.
There we go. That helps, right? Well, we're going to go ahead and bring our chorus up for our national anthem too. But I want to recognize, first of all, Officer Scott and thank him. Obviously, you guys can see as a member of our safety and security team. Two things recognized with Officer Scott. One is recognize him for making me feel old as I had him as a kid in middle school. So thank you for that. But also just to recognize something that you guys, some of you know, some of you may not. But last year, just to give you a testament of his dedication to our staff and students, we had a young lady that was choking at car rider and after Scott performed a Heimlich maneuver on her and saved her life. So that's just a testament to the folks that we have. And so, thank you, Officer Scott. We're going to let these ladies perform the national anthem and we'll, we'll introduce our JROTC in just a second.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
All right. So I invited Master Sergeant Parker up here. He's one of the leaders of the JROTC at East Paulding High School. And I wanted him to have the opportunity to introduce the stars of the show as cadets. So I'm going to turn it over to him and let him tell you a little bit about who he's brought with us and a little bit about each one of them.
Excuse me, ladies. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We got four leaders from our program. The lead rifle is manned by Cadet Master Sergeant Tobias Dix. He's a Flight Sergeant. He's a senior in our program. And after graduation, he plans to attend a trade school to pursue a profession in plumbing. Our color guard commander is Cadet Captain Jackson Anderson. He's a junior. He's our executive officer in the program. When he graduates next year, he wants to attend Georgia Tech, do Air Force ROTC, and eventually go in the Air Force as an officer. Cadet Silva is our next. She's carrying a state flag. She's a First Lieutenant or Cadet First Lieutenant. She's a sophomore. She's a Flight Commander. And after graduation, she plans to join the Coast Guard. And last but not least, we have Cadet Technical Sergeant Andre Mullins. He's an Element Leader. He's also our PTL, so Physical Training Leader. Helps us out with physical fitness. He's a junior. And upon graduation, he wants to join the Air Force. He's a junior, and upon graduation, he wants to join the Air Force. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna have one more song from PB Rich. Thanks for being here tonight. And so, once again, thank you to PB Rich Middle School, the chorus for being here tonight, and Ms. Kayla Thomas, who's their director. And so, again, give these guys one more round of applause as they leave the stage.
I know you guys are here to recognize your students, but we have a little bit of business that we have to take care of first, and then we'll do the recognitions. At this time, I need a motion to approve our regular session minutes from our October 7th meeting. So moved by Mr. Clayton, seconded by Mr. Nolan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of our regular session minutes, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. I do want to take one quick second. It is unanimous, but there are only six members here this evening. One of our board members, Jeff Fuller, had a medical procedure yesterday. He is home from the hospital, doing great. Just our prayers are with him as he's recovering. Just wanted everybody to know that he wishes he could be here this evening. Offers congratulations and celebration to all of the attendees here who have been recognized this evening. But he would be here if he could. Trust me, he would much rather be here than be at home recuperating. But I did want to say that. So, our meeting minutes have been approved from the previous meeting, and at this time, I'd like to turn our meeting over to our superintendent for the re-superintendent's report.
So, we are gonna get to the character in action and the fine arts in action recognitions. But first, we want to talk just a little bit about STEM. You know, in Paulding County, STEM is more than a class. It's our culture that touches literally every student in the district. All of our schools are actively engaged in STEM initiatives. In fact, our STEM continuum is a framework we use to introduce STEM skills and builds a deeper understanding in middle school, and then ultimately culminates in high school in our academies that prepare students for college, for careers, and just for life. So, through this work, students are learning to think critically, solve problems creatively, and collaborate with others to tackle real-world challenges. Whether it's designing sustainable gardens, building digital models, or exploring other areas of science, technology, engineering, or mathematics, our students are developing the skills to prepare them for, again, college, careers, and life. At this point, I'd like to invite Dr. Tiffany Frazier, our Associate Superintendent, to share more about our STEM initiatives at five of our schools and their designation as a Cognia STEM-certified school.
Good evening. We are very excited tonight to honor five schools who have really gone above and beyond to pursue STEM as a culture in their school, rather than a one-time event or just a class that happens independently of other learning. The Cognia STEM certification is an internationally-recognized certification of excellence in STEM education. It's not a checklist, but a demonstration that schools are embedding STEM into their culture, instruction, and community partnerships. This is a very rigorous process these schools went through last year under the support of our Coordinator of STEM, Ms. Sarah Graham, who will join me in just a second. Very rigorous process. They had to collect evidence, have classroom observations, interviews with staff and students, and they had to align to the 10 Cognia STEM standards. So, they had to show proficiency across all of those. Ms. Graham, will you join me on the stage, please?
The five schools we are honoring tonight demonstrated through a rigorous review process that their students are fully engaged in authentic, problem-based learning with leaders and teachers deeply committed to growth. Receiving certification is both a district and community achievement, and these banners we will present this evening represent years of dedication from staff, students, families, and partners working together to build a culture of innovation. Schools, as I call your names, please make your way onto the stage to receive your banner. And then, students, if you will remain on stage for just a bit, and we will have a little question-and-answer time with Mr. Barnett. Burnt Hickory Elementary School. Burnt Hickory Elementary has created a strong culture of collaborative STEM learning. Students engage in real-world projects that emphasize inquiry, problem-based solving, and reflection. Students and teachers lead consistently, model, and prioritize professional STEM learning. The principal at Burnt Hickory Elementary is Ms. Kristy Davis, and she is joined this evening by STEM teachers Laura Gregatus and Ashley Harrison, and by fifth-grade student Ori Orianna. Congratulations. And your student will stay and go to this seat with Dr. Frazier? Thank you, Burnt Hickory. McGarity Elementary School. McGarity Elementary has built a sustainable culture of interdisciplinary, project-based learning. Their students tackle authentic campus-based problems, while leaders emphasize professional development, stakeholder engagement, and real-world application. In addition to Cognia STEM certification, McGarity also holds Georgia State STEM certification. The principal at McGarity Elementary is Ms. Jamisa Hodge, and she has joined this evening by Assistant Principal Jackie Thomason, STEM teacher Dwanice Dunn, and fifth-grade student Reagan Hurst. Way to go, McGarity. Shelton Elementary School. Shelton Elementary fosters continuous STEM growth through interdisciplinary, real-world learning. Their students demonstrate mastery through inquiry, reflection, and performance-based assessments, supported by strong collaboration and community partnerships. The principal at Shelton Elementary is Ms. India Hudgens, and she is joined this evening by STEM teachers Josh Friedman and Jennifer Bryant, and by fifth-grade student Sanvika Kandalam. Way to go, Shelton. Hyrum High School. Hyrum High School Academy of Computer Science integrates year-long interdisciplinary PBL units that result in authentic products like podcasts, digital models, and designs. Their collaborative lab spaces foster mentorship, critical thinking, and STEM journaling, which is a true model of innovation. The principal at Hyrum High School is Mr. Darius Hodge, and he is accompanied this evening by the Academy AP, Mr. Chad Tittle, and the Academy Science Teacher, Kim Gidson, and the Academy ELA Teacher, Melissa Barber, as well as Senior Academy Student Ethan Goretto. Way to go, Hyrum High School. Paulding County High School. The Paulding County High School Academy of Science, Research, and Medicine engages students in authentic projects addressing local and global issues. Students show consistent STEM mastery through real-world applications, reflection, and college preparatory experiences. In addition to Cognia STEM certification, the Paulding County High School also holds Georgia State STEM certification. The principal of Paulding County High School is Mr. Andy Dorsey, and he is joined this evening by the Academy AP, Ms. Heather DeJohn Mathis, the Academy Science Teacher, Mr. Mark Peterson, the Academy ELA Teacher, Ms. Soraya Ali, as well as Senior Academy Student Kylie Sharp. Way to go, Paulding County High School. And at this time, we'll turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Barnett, and Associate Superintendent, Dr. Tiffany Frazier, for our student interviews.
You guys can prepare to be, have your IQ feel like it's about to drop, because these guys are all super impressive. We just want to take a minute just to ask them all a question and let them answer for you just from their perspective and from their own school. So, I'm gonna ask the elementary students here, and we'll start with Reagan. We're gonna ask these guys, what was your favorite part about STEM and why?
My favorite, my favorite part of STEM is that it is challenging, and it uses trial and error a lot. And I also really like that there is never just one way to build something. And like, for an example, if a class was making a 20-inch tower, one person would have this 20-inch tower with their design, and the other person would have this 20-inch tower with their design. They're both following the same guidelines, but they both have their own creative design, and that's what I really like about STEM.
So, this is Ori. I said Reagan just a second ago. How many of you, when you were in fifth grade, were looking for more challenging work? Not very many of them. This is Reagan. And so, Reagan, the same question for you.
My favorite part about STEM is just the overall science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. But my favorite parts that we've done so far is in our science and engineering. In science, for example, we have made dioramas of all the organelles in the animal and plant cell, in the animal and plant cells. And then, in engineering, we have, today actually, we have made, like, we had to construct bridges, and it either had to be a, it either had to be a beam bridge, a truss bridge, or a suspension bridge. In my team today, we had to construct a suspension bridge, and it was really fun. So, I really liked that. And I love Ms. Dunn is the best STEM teacher ever, because she leaves a positive impact on all of the students at McGarity, and she helps with our PPL a lot, because it's how we can sustain a healthy garden at McGarity. And we have not one, not two, but three healthy gardens at McGarity.
Reagan, great job. Half the people in the room didn't know what STEM stood for, and so you cleared that up for them. Awesome job. This is Sanvika, and she's got the same question. Tell us a little bit about what you like most.
So, STEM is meant, in STEM, you, your technology brain goes bigger, and you get to do scientific stuff, like experiments. And you get to do fun experiments and help your technology brain grow bigger. In every, anything you build, you always use the engineering design program, process. In Ms. Bryant's class, last year for our PPL, we had weather report, and we act like we were meteorologists, and we made PowerPoint and Adobe, and we made a speech, and we, she had a big green screen, and we used to stand up there and like, act like we were presenting a real, like, weather type of thing. And this year, at the beginning, we made a kindness charm. Every grade got to do it. So, in Tinkercad, we build what we thought of, our design, and we send it to her, and our class votes, and like, votes which one's the best one, and she 3D prints it for us. In Mr. Friedman's room, at the beginning of the year, we made this art bot, and he, he gave us a mortar- and he, he gave us a mortar to like, turn it. It was actually very cool, because he gave us a cup, a mortar, a rubber band, some tape, and three markers. And we had it to turn it into an art bot, and like, make it draw some lines at least. At the, and recently, we used, like, he made us make a bridge out of popsicle sticks. Like, no tape, no glue. We had it to put it up into a bridge with our hands by connecting it away. And on the same day, we used Kiva planks to make the impossible eagle. For this one, you had to have steady hands, or like, if you move it, the whole thing would break. And the eagle has like, an uneven shape, so it could fall easily. And at the very beginning, you put two bricks, you put two bricks that like, to hold it up, and at the end, you just take it off, and then it has to balance somehow. And STEM helps our scientific, technology, engineering, mathematical mind grow bigger. Thank you.
So, Sanvika, Reagan, Ori, awesome job. High schools, what you got for us? You gotta beat these guys. Ms. Frazier's going to ask you guys a question.
The bar is, the bar is really high, as you can see. And teachers, parents, if you ever wondered if kids are paying attention, I mean, how do you know every detail of everything that's happened in class? They are paying attention, and they're engaged. So part of what our goal is, and our graduate profile, is focused on building those skills from elementary school into high school. So my question for the high school students are, what project or activity have you done in high school that has helped you to solve real-world problems, or really to expand how you have applied STEM and STEM learning in your schooling career?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Ethan, and being in, in this magnet program has given me the opportunity to take part in a lot of STEM-related projects. But if, if I were to choose one, we, it would be an egg contraption. And what I mean by that is, we created, we created something to protect an egg from being dropped from a high, from a high height. And that project has taught me the value of energy, time, and how to calculate things, because we may not know it, but a lot goes into things. And there's a lot of math into, in things, and, and when, and when dropping something from a high place, there's a lot that goes into it. So that, that really impacted me, because I realized that STEM is everywhere. It, it's in things that we don't even think about. So yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ethan. And Ms. Kylie, you're from, so Ethan, you're from Hyrum High School, correct? And you are from Paulding County High School. Okay, so tell us your STEM experience.
Hi, I'm Kylie Sharp, and I'm going to talk a little bit about vermicomposting. So soil deterioration is a growing problem around the world, causing problems such as agricultural productivity, nutrient depletion, and loss of soil biodiversity. These cause harmful consequences such as flooding, soil erosion, and even climate change because of the release of carbon. And to counteract this, we are constructing composting bins that contain red wiggler worms, also known as vermicomposting. And red wiggler worms are detourors what thrive on decaying organic matter, and this allows for the natural process of decomposition to occur. And the results of vermicomposting and this decomposition allows for natural, rich, and healthy soil with certain qualities, such as a pH between 6 and 7, which is a neutral environment, enhanced porosity, which is pores in the soil, and aeration, which is pathways in the soil that improve the flow of air, water, and nutrients. And a bonus to these composting bins is that we are also reducing the amount of food waste around the school by using food that would otherwise have been thrown away in our composting bins.
That is fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing.
Ms. Frazier, I don't know if you have any last comments, but will you give these guys one more round of applause? Because this takes a lot of guts to get up there, right? And to word things so that the average person can understand it. Because you guys, super smart, super great responses. Ms. Frazier, did you have anything?
Yeah, absolutely. You guys are, just represent so much what we're trying to accomplish with our students through engagement, through understanding how you can impact the world, and just making sure that, that from a very young age, that you're learning how to think and solve problems, because you guys are the leaders of the future. You will be leading the next generation, and we are very excited to have you in charge. So thank you.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Up next, we are happy to share the Character in Ed winners, Character Education winners for the past couple of months with our Character in Action presentation. Each month, students are chosen by the teachers and/or administration of their schools as excellent representatives of positive character at school. Our August character word was courtesy, which is defined here as polite, civil, and courteous behavior towards others in words and actions. Tonight, we are recognizing students for the word courtesy from Burnt Hickory Elementary, Russum and Shelton Elementary, from Crossroads, Moses, and McClure Middle Schools, and from North Paulding High School. If we could have our board come up, and they can greet our students as they come up as well. And students, you will come up across the stage, greet our board members, and then have your photo taken on this side before you go down. From Burnt Hickory Elementary School, we have Parker Maestro. Parker is a 4th grader and is an amazing servant leader. He is well-mannered, kind, and caring to all of his classmates. He is also very mindful to include everyone and never leaves anyone out. That makes him such an amazing role model to his peers. We are so thankful for your courteous presence in our classroom and our school. Way to be an awesome wolf pup, Parker. From Russum Elementary School, we have Noah Nell. Noah is a 2nd grader, and courtesy is shown through small acts of kindness, respect, and thoughtfulness. Noah is a great example of all of these. We are proud of how he sets a positive example for others, and he always helps to create a warm, respectful environment in our school for learning. Way to go, Noah. From Shelton Elementary School, we have Wyatt Jen. Wyatt is a 5th grader and consistently demonstrates kindness and respect in our school, whether he's holding the door for others or listening intently without interrupting. His actions reflect thoughtfulness and a considerate spirit that we enjoy having him in our school. Way to go, Wyatt. From Crossroads Middle School, we have Luke Langley. Luke is a 7th grader and demonstrates exceptional courtesy and respect by always being helpful and consistently thoughtful in including others in games and activities, ensuring that everyone feels welcome. This is his nature. His actions reflect genuine kindness, consideration, and regard for those around him. Way to go, Luke. From McClure Middle School, we have Elijah Tuggel. I don't see Elijah here, but I'll say that he is an 8th grader and is always willing to go above and beyond every single day. And his school said that Elijah is the epitome of courtesy, so we're so glad to honor him. From Moses Middle School, we have Branson Baxter. Branson is in the 8th grade and has a consistently positive attitude and demonstrates outstanding manners at all times. Branson is kind, respectful, and friendly to everyone. His thoughtfulness and respect for others make him a wonderful example of courtesy. Way to go, Branson. And from North Paulding High School, we have Jolie Mills. Jolie is a senior and an incredibly kind and polite student. She helps others and helps to include everyone in conversations and activities. She also always is willing to give of her time to help out when needed for extra things. So we enjoy having Jolie in our school. Way to go, Jolie. Patriotism was the character word for the month of September, and is defined as love for one's country. We are recognizing students from Abney, McGarity, and Roberts Elementary Schools, from Rich and East Paulding Middle School, and East Paulding High School. From Abney Elementary, we have Jake Welton. Jake is a 4th grader and demonstrates patriotism through his actions, words, and attitude at school. He shows a love for his country and respect for its values in ways that just stand out among his peers. He understands that being a good citizen in the classroom and beyond is part of caring for and improving the country we all share. Way to go, Jake. From McGarity Elementary, we have Hadley Garman. Hadley is a 4th grader and is always the first one to stand and say the pledge, no matter where she is. She is proud of our men and women who serve, as well as our local heroes, firefighters and police officers, those first responders. She sets a great example to her peers daily on how to honor our country. Way to go, Hadley. From Roberts Elementary School, we have Dawson Toadvine. Dawson is a kindergarten student and demonstrates patriotism when he stands straight and tall with his hand on his heart, reciting the pledge. And he's also so respectful during our moment of silence. He's always diplomatic, as we experienced this evening, opening our meeting. He is fair to everyone and includes everyone with a gentle demeanor, his kind, empathetic, and respectful nature to everyone around him. Way to go, Dawson. From Rich Middle School, we have Caitlin Blevins. Caitlin is in the 8th grade and has been a dedicated member of the Flag Detail Crew for the past three years. She was nominated by Mr. Marsh, who described her as an essential part of the team. And beyond this role, she contributes to the school community in so many ways, serving on many clubs and organizations, such as a STEM ambassador. She's highly involved in the Special Education Buddy Club, the Garden Club, Art Makers. Thank you, Caitlin, for your commitment to leadership and patriotic spirit. From East Paulding Middle, we have Tyson Truitt. Tyson is an 8th grader, and he shows respect and love for his country through the respect he shows for our armed forces and our nation's flag. He aspires to join the Air Force, dedicating his time to become a pilot by taking flying classes to reach his career goals. Way to go, Tyson. And from East Paulding High School, we have Alex Araya Silva. Alex is a sophomore, and a few weeks ago, she was selected to be one of the ROTC candidates to represent the colors at the football game. We love her enthusiasm over this symbol of America. She is a hard worker, and she represents the American spirit. Way to go, Alex. Up next, we recognize our Fine Arts in Action with visual artists whose artwork will hang in the central office galleries. Each quarter, we rotate the artwork in the central office entryway with fresh student work. And this year, we are holding art contests each time, and we'll recognize the top three. I'm very excited to share the elementary art winners for this first quarter's display. From Abney Elementary, we have Trinity Bazil. Trinity is a 5th grader and is presenting an oil pastel. From Dugan Elementary School, we have Talia Levitt. Talia is a 5th grader and is presenting a mixed media piece entitled "In the Garden." From Hyrum Elementary School, we have Ashton Smith. Ashton is a 5th grader and is presenting a work in chalk and oil pastel. Thank you so much, Mr. Barnett. This completes our recognitions for this evening.
Madam Chair, that is all the recognitions we have for tonight. If you want to maybe let some of these folks go with a recess? I don't know. Some of them are looking at me like, hey, look at 7:22. We did pretty good, right? So thank you, guys, for being here.
We'll take, we'll take about a 10-minute break.
Somebody will let me know when we're actually live. My screen is dead. Okay. We are back, guys. At this time, I would like to turn this over to our superintendent to get started with our consent agenda.
All right, Madam Chair, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening, items A and B. They were presented on October the 7th, and they include recommendations to approve an easement agreement with Greystone Power at the Central Office, and to approve the renewal invitation for bid 24-230918 for asphalt paving to the Surface Masters, Inc., Company.
Okay. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of consent agenda items A through B, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan. Second by Ms. Sauer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving consent agenda items A through B, please raise your hands. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, for the action agenda tonight, we have a few items. The first up is an RFP for multipurpose athletic buildings, and for that, I will invite Cole Crowder, our Director of Procurement. Mitch Crowder?
Turn it on.
It's on.
It's on now.
He just turned it on.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am presenting our award for the RFP for multipurpose athletic buildings. This solicitation was issued on September 3rd, 2025, and posted to the district's website, PCSD Bonfire Solicitation Portal, the Georgia Procurement Registry, and in our district's lobby. Five responses to the bid were received honored before the deadline of October 3rd, 2025. Our evaluation committee has selected JNR Construction Development, Incorporated, for the award of this project upon their review and based upon the evaluation criteria. This award will be for the approval of that AIA contract to build four athletic buildings at Hiram High School, Pauling County High School, North Pauling High School, and South Pauling High School. Just as a reminder, architect fees are contracted separately as a professional service, and additional costs, including pre-construction, FFNE, and technology, are not included in this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. And so with that, I would like to recommend that we award requests for proposal RFP 26-250903, Multipurpose Athletic Buildings to JNR Construction and Development, Inc., of Carrollton, Georgia, for the construction of multipurpose athletic buildings at Hiram, Pauling County, North Pauling, and South Pauling High Schools.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of RFP 26-250903, the multipurpose athletic buildings, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Clayton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nolan. Is there any discussion? Here, go ahead.
One thing, what, at the appropriate time, can we, can you bring us back some information on the administrative rule for naming of fields and facilities? It occurred to me, we didn't discuss it at the time, but the multipurpose facilities that are coming online would be an excellent opportunity to have that discussion again about naming fields, naming facilities, et cetera. And I know that we did put some, there's administrative rules on that, but want to discuss it to get more information on it at the appropriate time.
Yes, sir, will do.
Anything else? All right, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, all in favor of approval of the multipurpose athletic buildings, and it is unanimous.
Well, that's a good segue for Mr. Chester here, because the next item is a recommendation to approve naming Elementary School Number 20, Crossroads Elementary School. We went over this recommendation at the board meeting on the 7th. Wanted to call this out as a separate vote rather than be a part of the consent agenda, so that's the recommendation this evening.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation to approve the naming of Elementary School Number 20 to be Crossroads Elementary School, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of naming Elementary School Number 20, Crossroads Elementary School. It is unanimous, I believe, Miss, okay, it is unanimous.
Madam Chair, the next action item is a request for approval of Resolution 25-3 that directs the superintendent and designated representatives to actively engage legislators, educational advocacy groups, and community stakeholders to advance the Pauling County Board of Education's 2026 legislative priorities on behalf of the families we serve, our employees, and the taxpayers of Pauling County.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation to approve Resolution 25-03, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by Ms. Sauer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of Resolution 2503. I believe that was unanimous, I'm sorry, I was reading. It is unanimous.
And Madam Chair, the next item is the item we presented on the 7th, which is a modification to school calendars. As the boards are aware, we put out a survey to get some feedback from our families, and the responses were, the right word, I think, is eclectic. They were, there were a lot of topics, a lot of preferences and ideas shared. But one thing that came through was there were a significant number of respondents that did not want to make the change next year because they had plans already made for next year's fall break. Some of them had had already put down deposits and really went pretty far in their, in their planning for that, for that break. So with that, we did remove the modification to next year's school calendar. And I did want to just mention real quick, thank you to all those who did respond. We had hundreds of responses. We looked through every single one of them. And so I will say, the winner for the most creative and funny response was an encouragement to not change next year's school calendar. So they're, they're going to be very happy. And here was their, here was their comment. "I actually like the thought of going on vacay and not having to share Disney World with anyone from Cobb County." I mean, how is it supposed to be the happiest place on earth if all those Cobb County people are in front of me in the line for a Slinky Dog? This seems like a win, maybe even divine intervention. So for that person, maybe it was divine intervention, because we have adjusted the, the recommendation, and this is now just to adjust fall break for the 27-28 school calendar from September 27th through October 1st, 2027, to September 20th through 24th, 2027. We also would like to adjust the fall break in the 28-29 school calendar from September 25th through September 29th, 2028, to September 18th through the 22nd, again, 2028. And that is the recommendation this evening, Madam Chair.
All right, hearing the superintendent's recommendation to, give me a little bit of, to leave the 26-27 school calendar as proposed, as
As it is.
It's what's out there, so it stays the same, but we will adjust the 27-28 and 28-29 school calendars to the weeks that you just discussed.
Yep.
So do I have a motion to approve the change of the 27-28 and 28-29 school calendars in reference to fall break?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Lyons, second by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion on the matter?
I just want to say kudos to those families that are already that far planned in advance and deposits paid, because I am nowhere near
Seriously.
thinking about planning for next fall break's vacation, so.
And I would like to say, I read every single response, even those that had absolutely nothing whatsoever to do with fall break, but we hear you. Whatever your responses are, we took the time to listen and to hear what you had to say. Thus the reason for not changing. It was overwhelming. I mean, there were over 900 responses that we received on this. So we just want to say thank you for standing up and speaking out. And again, if there's not any other discussion, any other questions, I would like to, all in favor of the motion to adjust the 27-28 and 28-29 school calendars as it refers to fall break, please raise your hand. I'm sorry, Teresa?
Yes.
I got it. I'm sorry, I just missed you. It is unanimous.
And Madam Chair, this evening, I request approval of the personnel report as presented, including items 1 through 30.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation for approval of personnel items 1 through 30, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Lyons, second by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of personnel items 1 through 30. It is unanimous.
And Madam Chair, the last item is in regards to disciplinary tribunal appeal number one. My recommendation to the board is that they uphold the decision of the Tribunal Disciplinary Committee for Tribunal Appeal Number One.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation to approve the upholding of the tribunal appeal number one, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan, second by Mr. Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of upholding the tribunal appeal number one, and that is unanimous.
That's all I have this evening, Madam Chair.
All right, I'm going to ask, this is a little bit of a different venue, and I don't know if we had any, even if there was a place to sign up, if we had anyone sign up. I know we have someone here who may not have signed up, but I know that, looking around the room, there is one individual here that, if you don't mind, if you still want to speak, if you will sign up and then come to assume this microphone. While you're signing up, when you get to the podium, if you'll state your name, and then I am going to turn this over to our board attorney for instructions on public participation at a board meeting. If you'll state your name and the topic that you're wishing to speak about, and then I will turn it over.
Absolutely, thank you. My name is Rochelle Greeson, and I am speaking on behalf of the changes, yes ma'am.
She's good. I asked her to say what she was speaking about. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to speak on behalf of the changes regarding the school calendar. I had initially come in here preparing to speak regarding that on a completely different topic, but then you guys changed how that was going to be addressed, so now I'm changing what I was going to speak about, so.
One second.
One second, just, I was going to tell you, just by way of rule, you're going to give in five minutes to address the board. I'll keep track of your time.
Absolutely.
When you get to about four minutes.
I won't even need that, but thank you.
I'll let you know at the four-minute mark if you're still going. If they, if the board were to ask you questions, we'll stop the clock, and that won't count against you. You go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. First and foremost, I just, again, my name is Rochelle Greeson. I'm coming not only as a parent and a resident here in Pauling County, but I am a small business owner. Specifically, I am a travel agent, and yes, I have lots of clients who are booked very far into the future. If you haven't planned fall break yet, you're behind. So thank you for hearing the feedback of the community, because it, it means a lot. It's not just the parents and the families that it affects. It affects a tremendous amount of my bottom line as a business owner. In running numbers last night and preparing for this meeting, I usually look at my numbers holistically and on a bigger, much larger scale number system, and funneling it down, fall break alone brings in 20% of my annual gross sales, which in turn brings roughly 20% of my annual income. So changing that would incur a lot of costs to my families, which could then cap them on what their budgets are, and they could cancel their vacations, and that could be detrimental to not only my business, but what my family has for income and how I support my community. I'm a very, very involved individual in the community. It's not all just talk. I am, I put my mouth and my money where it's at. I do support every school that my children attend on lots of various different levels through volunteering, but also through support. My, my name, my logo, my business is on every banner that you'll find at all three, East Pauling High School, Moses Middle School, and Avni Elementary School. I'm a big, huge proponent in what a small business community means and what that looks like. So without the community here in Pauling County, we, we can't be a community. So I appreciate you guys hearing from the local community and taking that feedback from those families. Each of you should have received an email from me, both from my business email, but also from me as a parent and the implications it was going to have to me and my family personally, because our trip is also booked for fall break and what that financial implication was going to do to us. So I appreciate you hearing the feedback. I appreciate you taking that into consideration. And thank you for, again, hearing the people, because it does mean a lot to know that I am just a little, little guy over here, and it did make a difference that we were heard. So thank you. I've also been asked to speak on behalf of a few of my travel agent friends here in the community who couldn't make it tonight, and I know they feel the exact same way. We were all having a celebratory text message just a few moments ago when you unanimously voted. So thank you all so very much. We appreciate listening and hearing the feedback. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, it's board member comments, and Mr. Clayton, you get to go first.
I know you guys probably get tired of hearing this, but I love this meeting every time we have it. It's great to get the community out here, the kids out here. You know, it just kind of reinforces what we do and why we do what we do. So thank you for coming out. We do, a lot of people say we don't listen, but we do listen. We do take your feedback, whether we agree with it or not. We listen to everybody. We take the time to digest it, look over it, and just make sure we make the best decision possible for the students, the staff, and the community. So everyone, have a great night.
Ms. Sauer?
I really enjoyed it. Great job. Thank you.
Mr. Chester?
Thank you for, everyone for coming out. Appreciate you being here. Six months till graduation? Counting it down. Thank you.
Ms. Lyons?
Well, first thing I want to say is how much I really enjoyed the choir tonight. The harmonies were absolutely beautiful, and a great job to their choir director and to the, the young voices that we, we heard tonight. It was absolutely beautiful. And congratulations to all of our STEM schools. It is really a huge honor for you guys to be reaching those kind of goals, and I, we look forward to other schools becoming STEM certified. I remember when we had our first STEM certification, we had McGarvey and Pauling, wasn't it, Steve? Were our first schools, and I just look forward to seeing all of our schools in our county become STEM certified. But I particularly wanted to make a comment on the first young man who spoke. He said that they all had the same instructions, but they, they had different designs as a result of their creativity, and there's nothing more true than that. You can have the same toys, the same group of kids, the same instructions, but when you put that element of creativity in there, it's just endless the possibilities that can be created, and the things that one thought leads to another thought, and, and wonderful things begin to happen when you have brilliant students like we have in Pauling County and great leaders, great teachers, and great curriculum. And the STEM certification is a goal that I'd like to see us attain for the entire district. And that's all.
Mr. Nolan?
All right, I just want to, first of all, thank everyone who attended tonight. Congratulations to all the students who were recognized for their character, their achievements, their artwork. But I also want to take a minute to thank you to all of those individuals in this room that worked very, very hard to put this meeting on. Michelle Taylor, I don't see you, but I know you're in here working hard. There you are. Thank you so much. Jay Dillon, great job. I know you're here, there you are. Julie Ragsdale, Katie Anderson, the entire team, all of you guys worked very, very hard. This is our favorite event, or favorite meeting, I should say, not an event. If we do this in the fall, we do it again in the spring, and we, as board members, love it. It's an opportunity for us to get to see the students and the parents, but there's a lot of work that goes into this, and we just want to say thank you to all of you for all the hard work to, to accomplish this, and job well done. So thank you very much. I just want to say that, again, one more time, I, I know it's said a lot of times that, that we are just here and we don't listen and we don't, we just make decisions, but we're here to serve the public. We're here to serve our students. We're here to serve our, our employees and the community, and the decisions that we make, we do not take lightly. There is not a perfect answer to the decisions that we make sometimes, and I, I think Mr. Clayton said it very well. We might not always agree, but I can tell you that we all agree that we're here to do what's best for our students, our employees, and the community as a whole. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Nolan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clayton. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, and good night, we're adjourned.